You say it looks like it's six o'clock, open the meeting. And looks like we've got a pretty sparse agenda this evening.
We'll go for a record.
Looks like we're all present in the counter for Ken won't be with us this evening. Anyone recording other than Steve? The only thing we have on the agenda this evening is the continued public hearings for 140 Tyhonet Road and 150 Tyhonet Road. So I guess we'll jump right in with 140 if that works. Everyone?
Nice to see you all. Steve Cunningham with Beals and Thomas and Marcus with Borrego is on the line as well. For 140, we're actually going to request a continuance. We did not submit revised materials and we also want to make sure that Charlie has sufficient time to review once we do submit. But we did submit revised materials for 150 Tyhonet.
You're coming in very, very low or quiet.
Let me try something different. I'll, I'll be back in a second. Although I think I'm gonna need to share my screen. So one moment.
George, this is Richard. I can, I can hear just fine.
Let me see if I can boost things up a little.
I can hear a fine too, George.
There we go. I think I got it now. Must have been on my end. I don't know if you have any of the, well, this is 140. I don't. Ken has sent us draft.
Is this any better by any chance?
Yeah, I think that was on my end. I boosted the volume up.
Okay, I was hoping that just exiting out and rejoining would do the trick like it sometimes does. So you can all hear me okay now?
Yeah, very good.
Great. So 140 to Haunted, I was saying, we have not submitted revised materials. So for that hearing, we'll request a continuance. We're happy to talk through anything the board would like this evening, but there's nothing new to review from the last time we met. And then for 150 to Haunted, we did submit revised materials based on our discussion. I think it was on the ninth with the board and I'm happy to review those. Maybe I can share my screen if that's acceptable.
This is your, oh, what a dated today?
Uh, yes, actually it was just dated today. We were tarding them all last week and finalized them this weekend and sent them today. So you should see my screen. A plan.
Mm hmm.
Okay. So the materials that we submitted today were a response to the peer review comments that we received from Charlie. Those responses are really as discussed at the last planning board meeting. And so quickly, on the easterly edge of the site, we did pull all of the work, including any tree clearing out of the 50-foot vegetated buffer. Submit a supplemental profile review, which I'll review in a moment. And then we did discuss this northeast access drive at the last meeting as well, and I coordinated with the conservation office and our engineer coordinated with Charlie as well to confirm that that can stay. The last hearing, we had discussed if there were no stormwater or conservation reasons to move. I think it was acceptable to the board and we did confirm that. So that stays. And then there were several stormwater related comments from Charlie of a technical nature in terms of the slopes of the access drives, a couple of pipes that he wanted corrected in terms of pitch and things like that. So those revisions have been made as well to address Charlie's comments. And we did, our engineer did coordinate with Charlie over the phone to make sure that we were, you know, fully understanding his comments and as discussed at the last meeting. So those should be fully addressed. And then finally, we also provided a revised decommissioning plan now that the plans are final. So that was the material submitted today. A response letter answering the questions and comments that Charlie had, a revised site plan set, the decommissioning statement, and then the other item that was provided was the profile view, which is this document here.
You heard my phone. You heard my phone. I figured I better go check it. It might be Charlie.
In case it's.
The, let me see if I can, I got Charlie Rowley on the phone here. So we're going over the response to your plans for 150 Tyhonet Road? And I don't know, did Charlie get a copy of this response, Stacy?
He did, but it was just sent today by email. I did send it to him. I'm not sure if he's seen it. And I know the hard copies were delivered to town hall around noon, but I, I wouldn't think he would have received the hard copy yet. But perhaps he has.
Yeah, George, I haven't seen the plans to look at. I have no idea what they look like at this point.
Okay, I know they just came in this morning, I guess.
So I'm happy to go into, you know, detail on the responses if, if it's helpful with Charlie on the line. And I can also review the, the profile view, but whatever the board's pleasure is.
Are you comfortable going over your, this response letter in this fashion, Charlie, or?
Yeah, if they'd like to go over it, that's fine. I haven't had a chance to see the plans and see how the comments relate to them. So we'll just have to see what she says.
Okay.
All right. So the first, the first comment that Charlie had was kind of just a summary of the, the site. So no response required there. The second comment related to the vegetated buffer, the 50-foot vegetated buffer, and we had discussed this with the board at some length at the last hearing, but taking the direction from the board, we did remove all cutting from that 50-foot vegetated buffer. So there is currently no work within the 50-foot vegetated buffer per the zoning by law. And looking at the plans, that's it was previously along this easterly perimeter of the site where there was some tree cutting, but no stumping proposed. And you can see now that that 50-foot offset is held. The third comment related to screening from Tohonet Road actually, but then that also elicited a broader discussion about potential views from Red Pine Lane. And so I think we had settled the Tohonet Road question with the board at the last meeting, but we did discuss providing a supplemental profile view. And that was included with the letter. And I'll just scroll to it on my screen so you can see it. So we took a profile view from the northerlymost home at the end of the cul-de-sac, kind of cutting obliquely across the easement to try and capture the view that would be most likely to have any visibility. So here's Tohonet Road. This is the home, obviously Tohonet Pond, and then the array. And so there's between the trees here, and then this is obviously the profile view. Between the trees here along the edge of Tohonet Pond and then the trees between the power lines and the solar array, there's nearly 200 feet, 199 feet of wooded buffer. This area in the center here is the existing utility corridor. And then here is Tohonet Pond. So I'll leave that up in case there are initial questions on that.
George, I'm gonna have to make a comment on that simply because of the profile line that you've been shown does not include the clearing that'll have to be done in order to get the access road adjacent to the power line. So until I see their 30-scale plan and see how much clearing has to be done in order to get that road in there, I'm not comfortable with saying, yeah, there's no visibility from the west side of the pond. And that comment, by the way, had nothing to do with my comment, which was
Right.
Tyhonet Road, Tyhonet Road being a private way not withstanding.
Could we address this with possibly a one-year or one growing season look back to see if additional screening is needed?
Well, by that time, the panel array is gonna be out, George. I'm not sure what sort of screening would be needed. Once I see the 30-scale plans, I might be able to give you a better idea. But I can't right at the moment. I need the whole size 30-scale plan to be able to check because what'll happen is when they cut the grade for the road, they're gonna be cutting into the slope to the north. And in order to do that, you gotta cut trees. So I don't know what the conditions will be like once that road is put in place.
No, I was just thinking in terms of the other side of the pond. Where it's not quite so clear, but yeah, by all means, you want to see the plans.
Anything else, profile or view related? Or shall I proceed with the other comments? So let's see, that was three. And four related to the access drive. So as I was mentioning before Charlie was on the line, the, we had left it at the last meeting that if the, if there wasn't a reason to need to eliminate the northeasterly access drive either for stormwater or conservation commission reasons, then I think the planning board was comfortable with it remaining. And we did take a look at the stormwater and coordinated with Charlie. And so I think we've addressed that. And I also coordinated with Dave Fischette as well and presented this at the last conservation commission meeting. So our understanding is that there are no issues from that perspective with the northeasterly drive. So our plans currently show that northeasterly drive remaining.
Again, what I talked about with, I didn't, Mr. Markey, I believe, it was, was that I wanted to see what the grade was going to be and how they're gonna handle stormwater. That's the steepest of the three roads. And I want to be sure that there's no runoff that ends up down the Tyhonet. So until I see what their solution was to preventing erosion and runoff, I just reserve comments on that.
Yep. And Charlie, just to facilitate your review, obviously it's shown on the plans, but then comment six related to that as well. So the 30-scale plans were provided. And I know you and Jeff had talked about kind of cross pitching the driveway and some different surface material as well. So that's kind of summarized in this response and should be reflected on the plans for your review. We had discussed, yep, we had discussed the overhead wire connections at the last board meeting. And I think we ended that, given the site context and adjacency to the transmission right of way, that the overhead poles in this context were acceptable. That was comment number five. Six, as I just mentioned, deals with the stormwater comments that Charlie had raised regarding some of the site access and providing some 30-scale plans, which we've done. Seven was also a stormwater related comment regarding the pipe outfalls and eliminating them, which we did do per Charlie's suggestion. We also added some spot grades to the berm of the basin just to make sure that we're maintaining one foot of freeboard during the 100-year storm. And then comment eight dealt with putting in some pitch for the cross connecting pipe, which we've done as well. We also discussed with Charlie and Charlie, you would mention this in your comment, and we discussed it at the hearing, the animal protection. So we added a note to the plan indicating that the appropriateness of whether animal protection was necessary would be evaluated in the field during construction with the town. It's something that we haven't necessarily seen on similar pipes. And I think, Charlie, I don't want to speak for you, so please pipe in if this isn't accurate, but Jeff had the sense that it wasn't a major issue as long as there was the pitch on the pipe.
Yes, that was the most important thing in my view. I just didn't want to see a situation develop where a small animal could get stuck in there and so.
Right.
But the pitch on the pipe was the most important thing to me.
Yep. And then comment nine just mentioned the decommissioning plan, which we submitted a revised one reflecting the final plans herein. So the final, you know, module counts and all of that. So that decommissioning plan is attached to the letter as well.
Stacy, just a question that is not related specifically to this plan.
Yep.
But in general, how many acres now does Borrego have under a solar farm production?
On the make piece property specifically?
Yes.
I will have to defer to Zach if you know Zach off the top of your head. Otherwise, I can try and do some quick research.
Yeah, I, I don't off the top of my head, but it would probably take me about five minutes and I could have one.
Yeah, I can't quite do it in five minutes, but I can certainly have it and provide it at some point.
How did you achieve the 50-foot setback on, what is it, the eastern side? Did you shrink the array or did you plan to move the property line?
Actually, option three, we just eliminated the clearing and left the array footprint as it is. And my understanding is there'll be a hit on the productivity because of the increased shading. But we just eliminated the, the tree clearing along this edge and left the array footprint as it was proposed.
Those are mature pines along there or?
I haven't personally walked this full length. My guess would be yes, based on the aerial imagery and the other, you know, other portions of the site.
Stacy, one other question, just to clarify something. When I read the proposed special permit, it mentioned a Form A plan and a special permit. Was not this particular property part of that revised special permit plan where internal lot lines were revoked by a recent plan that was endorsed?
Yes. So the, and I'm, I think I'm following your question, Charlie. We did not submit an A and R, although I'd have to look back at the original file with the special perm application. But yes, the lot lines, some of the lot lines shown on this site exhibit were affected by the 140 Tohonet A and R, and those should have been updated on this current plan set that was submitted.
Okay.
Wait, Stacy, I might correct, I might correct you there, Stacy.
Oh, sure.
It's my understanding that this lot was not changed by the recent A and R plan at all. It was only the southern lot.
Correct.
There are some lot lines that might be shown on this, on this plan, but this lot was not affected. The acreage of the lot did not change.
Correct. Yeah, thank you for clarifying, Zach. That's what I intended to convey, but did not do so clearly.
I understand that this lot was not changed, but there were some boundaries that were outside that that were changed. And it's reflected in the special permit for 150.
Um, but I'm not sure I follow the question.
The plan that was for 140 included boundary lines that are outside of the limits of this property. But are shown on this plan.
Correct.
Specifically, it's the line which is beyond your solar array to the east, sort of a dog leg that goes to the east.
Correct. Let me, maybe.
Internal lot line that was removed in order to give you all of the area that you needed.
For the southern property.
That was my question, whether or not anything shown on that southern property was also shown on, on this particular plan, not for the limits of what you've got for array. But what was shown east of that?
So our intent with updating this, if this is getting to your question, Charlie, is that any updated lot lines that were affected by 140, but are, happen to be shown on this plan set should be reflective of that recent A and R, even though they don't relate specifically to this 150 project?
All right. Well, I just think that we need to check the language of the special permit to be sure the correct Form A plan is referenced. That's all.
Okay.
Any, any questions from the board members? Any further direction you wanna offer? I, I think we're also gonna have to continue this until he gets a chance to review your, your changes.
I, I agree, George. This is Richard. I think I'm relying heavily on Charlie and, and his review of the plans at this point. I think most of the issues that I had have been addressed already. And we're down into some pretty technical stuff that I rely heavily on Charlie for.
Yeah, agreed.
Correct. Uh, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone online that would get off a comment or concern, or would you speak up?
George, quick one for me before you move on. The decision date, I think on the paper it says 11/24/2020. That date's gonna have to be changed also to reflect the time we need, right?
Let me just see what the, uh, yeah, we had continued the decision date to 11/24. 140 Tyhonet continued to December 15th. If we could get that same accommodation here, I think we could, we could get the review done and bring this to a close.
Sounds good to me. Charlie, can that, will that work with you, Charlie?
No problem.
So Stacy, could you forward us a continuance?
Sure. Zach, I assume no issue with that?
Oh, yeah. No, not at all.
Okay. Yes, I will do that. Thank you.
Is there a meeting on the 30th on Monday?
Uh, we do have a public hearing scheduled for Monday.
It'd be great to finish this one up on Monday. I'm happy to leave plenty of room so you don't have to keep kind of kicking the can down the road with respect to the paperwork, but we'd love to, we'd love to discuss this project again on Monday if, if that works for Charlie's timing.
Does that work for you, Charlie?
I'll have to pick up the plans tomorrow from the planning office and then see where I go from there. I can probably make it work if, if you want to meet. You're gonna have to change your agenda because like.
All right. What's the board's feeling on next Monday? That's the zoning amendment for the notice group?
That, that public hearing, just so Stacy and Zach know, that, that public hearing could last a while.
It could be, it could be lengthy, yes. Any concerns?
It's okay with me if it works.
Yeah, not on our side. These Zoom meetings make it a little easier on us.
So let me, let me just, let me ask this, assuming that, assuming that we do put it on this, on the agenda for next week, how long do you think we need to, to, how long do you think the, the this portion would take next Monday? I'm asking the board and Stacy. I mean, my, where I'm going, George, is maybe we put it first.
Might be a good idea. I think we've got 99% of the details worked out on this. As long as Charlie doesn't find anything glaring, I would think that we would be able to dispatch this in short order.
I would just ask that everybody familiarize themselves with the draft decision. And forward any comments to Ken so you can make adjustments? Or at least take notes so we can.
Is Ken out for two weeks or just a week?
Say that again.
Is Ken out for a couple of weeks? At the office?
December 7th.
Okay.
Bear in mind also that I haven't had a chance to take a look at the decommissioning document that was also submitted. I don't know whether it's a board division to look at that either.
I think that just came in, the updated one just came in. Well, at this point, I would say we'll, we'll do the best we can for the 30th and if, if you can't complete your review or there's some outstanding issues that we need to resolve, we'll take it from there. And this is just on 150 Tyhonet for Monday night?
Yes.
So let's just, let's assume that we're gonna get through it. George, with Ken out, you're gonna ask Sonya to update the agenda for the 30th?
Yes.
Would you like, or if you want me to do it, I'll be happy to. But do we all agree that we should put this first on the agenda?
Yeah, I think that would be a thing to do.
I, I agree.
I agree.
Okay, good.
Can I get a motion to continue to November 30th at six o'clock?
Motion to continue 150 Tohonet Road until November 30th and listed as number one on the agenda.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appalled? Unanimous.
Thank you very much for accommodating. And then for 140 Tohonet, what date would that be continued to?
I have a calendar in front of me. What is our regular meeting?
It's December 14th. December 14th, I think.
See if I can look at my calendar without losing Charlie.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. It's, it is the second Monday in December is the 14th.
Can I get a motion to the same?
Motion to continue 140 Tohonet Pond Road, Tohonet Road until December 14th.
Second. Discussion. Probably need a little grace period on the decision deadline for that.
Okay. So I think we had it as December 15th. So what's the board's pleasure?
Correct.
Stacy, is your office open on Friday?
Um, we are not, but I am available and I can check with Jeff and see if he is as well.
Cause that leaves me tomorrow and then the next day, if we're not available to really get anything done between then and Friday.
Yep. I'll definitely be available, Charlie, on Friday if needed.
Okay, we'll see how it goes then.
Okay.
So we had a motion to second on 140 Tahanet? I don't know if I can ask for them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Claire, have you, did you tune in just for savage amusement or you have something to share with us?
You're muted, Claire.
No, I, I just tuned in, just trying to keep my ears to the ground for upcoming town meetings.
Okay. Guess next Monday is gonna be the big one. That's all I have on the agenda this evening.
A, a quick question. Has anyone heard anything about, um, Mr. Clemmie's property and the enforcement that we were gonna try to take there to get the trailers off the property?
Uh, I don't know the status of the trailers. I, I think the building commissioner was working with him on that.
I'm thinking, um, when we had the, we had the three people come speak to us, couple, two, three meetings ago about our enforcement of that special permit, it, it struck me pretty hard. I think it, I mean, we might want to put this as an agenda item for every meeting, just to do a, a checkup on where we're at. So we don't lose sight of it, even though over the winter it might be no update. But I live right next to it. I'll drive by it and take a look at it, see where the trailers are there or not, if he's doing anything else. But I think we should add it to the agenda until we get it resolved.
Yeah, I agree.
That's a good one, Rich. I like that.
I agree.
Bring some corn for the deer.
Is that all right with you, George?
George, you want to, uh, you want to fill Sonya in on that? Keep it as an agenda item?
I, I'll take care of that. You want me to, while I do that, you want me to, uh, ask her to adjust the 30th for you as well?
That would be great.
All right. So I'll put in the 150, uh, public hearing on the 30th agenda and first on the list. I'll take care of it right now.
Very good. Anything further?
Intend a motion to adjourn?
I would.
Go on, Mike.
Charlie, could you hold for a second? I just want to talk to you after the meeting.
Sure. Sure thing.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like, uh, 6:35 roughly?
George, that might be a record.
Yep.
Definitely.
Good night, Claire.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yep, stay safe.